Hello. Today, I'm sitting down with Shelley Mador, who's a candidate for Ward Two City Council. Hello.
Hello. Thank you for having me today.
Great. Well, why don't we begin with just talking a little bit about yourself and why you decided to run for city council in Ward Two?
Sure. Well, I have been resident in Minneapolis for many years, and as I've been watching what's been happening on the city council and some of the chaos and the lack of focus and honestly, a lack of some good governance. My background is I'm a former DFL legislator. I have been a community activist for a number of years, supporting and advocating for people in underserved communities, including people with disabilities. And I just, as all of this just led me to say it is time for some common sense leadership to come back into this race. And we have lost that discussion with that. So that is what really propelled me into deciding to run this year.
And when you were in the legislature, what district did you represent?
Yes, I was from the South Metro, so I was in Apple Valley, Burnsville. I was the first legislator, the first DFLer in my district in over thirty years to represent that district.
Wow, okay.
So it was, yeah, so it kind of feels a little bit like that again, to be honest.
Well, how did you pull that off? What did you find was the message that resonated for you?
What it really was, was reconnecting back to the community. It wasn't about party politics. It was about talking to the community. And I had been an advocate for families with disabilities. That's where how I kind of got started. And as I had done that outreach, I went from just a couple of families that I was working with to over three hundred and fifty families. And I organized business and community events and made sure that people were engaged. And that just led me to talk about then transportation. Believe it or not, there's a segue there because a lot of folks with disabilities have to rely on public transportation.
Sure, yeah.
It was lacking in the South Metro, so I joined the Thirty Five W Solutions Alliance as a citizen advocate, worked with state legislators on building and building transit out to these areas. We were able to do that while I was in the office. I was also able to expand the taxing district. I worked with R.T. Ryback at the time. He was the mayor and talking about the need for us to bring workers to Minneapolis. And the best way for us to do that was to build transit systems. So fully supportive of that, I sat on the Transportation and Policy Committee. And we worked, we moved forward with implementing that. I was also unfortunately in the legislature when the, when the bridge fell down.
Oh, okay.
And that was a horrific experience to go through as a, as a young legislator and understanding the impact of that on that community. And it really forced me to have, what is it that we're doing here as legislators? What is our role in governance? To be sure that people feel safe, feel supported, and they feel that they can go about their day without worrying about the things that we're supposed to be worrying about. And it really, you know, set the tone for how I would continue to legislate. So.
Okay. And so how many years were you in the legislature?
I was there for two because, as we just said right now, you know, it was a very difficult situation, given that I turned over a seat. And but what I was happy about was that it turned over the, the seat on the other side of the district and also our senate seat. So, and those have remained blue since. So that was great.
I mean, I think the experience, the insight can only be helpful, absolutely. And so as you're visiting with neighbors and others in the community, like what's, how do you explain to them why they should choose you?
Well, I talk about exactly what I just said to you is about what is it that they want to worry about every day? Do they want to worry that if they call nine one one that a policeman, a police officer will show up? Do they want to be worried about whether or not they have to be the one to talk about why their potholes are not being filled? Are they the ones that are supposed to be worrying about whether or not their businesses can survive in their community? People want to be worried about the things that matter to them the most, and that is their ability to function every day, that they can pay the rent, that they can get to their jobs on time, that their kids are taken care of in schools. And as I talk to the community about that, I have to also talk about what does it mean for a city council and what does a city council member do to help to deliver those sorts of basic services? And those are the things, as I begin to talk about that, people, as a matter of fact, I was at a meeting just last week, and somebody walked me out to point out that they had a light out that they have called a number of times, including to the current council member to fix, and it has not been fixed. And I want to say three or four years at this point.
Yeah.
And just scratching their head saying, what's going on?
Yeah, I feel like sometimes people don't understand how small things like that really erode people's faith in government, right?
Yes.
Um, we had a light out in our alley and called and called, and it really took a while. It took, I don't, it didn't take years, but I mean, it did take a while. And you, it's those kind of things where people are like, where are my tax dollars going?
Right. That's exactly right. And if we aren't, if we aren't talking about some of those basic services, how can we have somebody, how can you then think about those bigger issues? And if every day it is a struggle for you to get around your neighborhood, to get around your city streets, to get around, to be able to find a local coffee shop, for example. In my ward, right now, we've had a lot of businesses close. And they are not, we are not bringing in new businesses to fill those slots.
And so what would you attribute those closures to?
I think some of it is the, obviously COVID and the pandemic impacted a lot of our businesses. I also think that the protests for, for George Floyd, I think that that had an awful lot to do with where people, their sense of security. They just, this was just not a place where they felt that this was a good place for them to do business. And we have seen that honestly on the lack of progress for George Floyd Square. We have businesses that are still struggling to get by there, and we still cannot address that five years out. I also think it was, you know, the COVID, the pandemic. We had a long period of time where people could not get out. Small businesses do not live on big reserves. You know, when I think about Harvard, like challenging Trump with their eighty-five billion dollar, whatever it is, it's some outrageous number.
They've got a little runway.
They do. So if somebody decides not to pay tuition, well, they might be okay. But for our small businesses, that is not the reserves that they work on. It is, it is literally like the rest of us, month to month, paycheck to paycheck, and especially if they have employees. And they're very concerned about taking care of their employees.
So give me a little tour of Ward Two, if you don't mind. I mean, the university's there, Wiseman, which is incredible.
Yes.
But what are, what are some of the other features, things that people should know about if they were going to visit Ward Two?
Well, I have to tell you, the thing that I just enjoy most about the ward is the number of neighborhood associations and how active they are. We have so many groups of people that are working to address environmental concerns and looking at their roads and construction projects, trying to make sure that we have bike lanes, but are also compatible with people that are car dependent. And when you're thinking about that, all of that area, the East, East Side Association, East Bank Association, I'm sorry, they just merged, and I'm still trying to remember all of their names. But as you sit and talk to those folks, they want to make sure that projects are being completed on time. Seward is another example, a great community of a lot of local homeowners and renters that are very engaged in, in topics that impact them every day, public safety, things like that. Prospect Park, of course, which is on the outside of the university. That transition neighborhood going into St. Paul, like you can see that as you're walking down those streets. And as I've walked them myself, you know, you can see how the neighborhood changes. The, the old infrastructure that we had, the old housing stock that we had there, some of it is just so lovely just even to look at. So we have a lot of different, oh, and of course Cedar Riverside, I'm sorry. Cedar Riverside is also an area where as soon as you walk into it, the first thing you're greeted, or drive into it, the first thing you're greeted with is a big park, which just says exactly what we want to say about this neighborhood. It's a great place to play, live, and work.
Great. And so what are kind of the demographics, if you will? Remember from last election, twenty twenty-three, not very many people showed up to vote?
No, no.
So tell me more about that. Do you think that'll be different this time around? Or what's the sort of the, the plan to motivate more people?
Well, I think caucuses certainly showed us that people are motivated.
Yeah.
We had, the, the twenty twenty-three election, I think, was an outlier because of, we were coming out of the pandemic, people were not really organized, they didn't really understand how, I don't even think a lot of people understood how to engage via Zoom. It was still, even though it was something maybe a lot of business folks had been around, maybe not a lot of folks for regular.
That's right. They did all the conventions and caucuses via Zoom.
Yes. So if you have already a technology challenge, there isn't a whole lot of information going out there, that is certainly going to suppress people becoming more active. I do think, though, that what it showed was the vulnerability of our current council member and the fact that we had so few people show up. And even of those that did, there was a write-in candidate who got, who got a lot of votes. And what I'm hearing as I talk to voters that voted that for that write-in candidate is, we just did not want this representative, this council member anymore.
Yeah, and I shouldn't assume, I kind of did, that you're going for the DFL nomination? Is that right?
I am going for the DFL endorsement, yes. I feel, I feel very aligned with those values. And I do believe, again, as, as a former legislator, I fought for those values. And I want to be able to, to bring that same vision, support, and values back to this district. And there was, there was a time when a DFLer did represent this district. And I think, you know, Cam, I think, did a great job as a Green Party, but I think it also showed that people are interested in talking about their everyday, their everyday issues. And that's what I think the DFL brings.
You know, that's, that's a good point. I didn't really think about that transition. It did go from green to democratic socialist. So it will be curious to see if they go back to supporting the DFL. So tell me, I'd just like to hear, like, what are your top three topics? What do you lead with when you speak with people?
Sure. Well, again, it all depends where we're at, right? So if, if we have a, when I'm talking to students and younger people there, number one issue is public safety. As I'm sure everybody is aware, we've had a lot of news coverage about students being attacked and, and not feeling safe. We have to be able to talk about that. And we really don't. We're talking about a lot of things other than that. How can we bring those groups together to promote public safety?
And there's a, sorry to jump ahead here.
Oh, no, no.
But there's an interesting, and I think this is still going on, where the city has actually contracted with the university police to provide security, right?
Yeah.
Instead of, because they're so short-staffed.
That's exactly right. That's exactly what I was going to say. Thank you for saying it. That's exactly the issue that we have. Right now, we are short police officers. We are outsourcing a lot of our public safety. You saw the chaos just a couple of months ago with GVI and YGVI funding. We have, they're just recently, the League of Women Voters hosted a forum with Commissioner Barnett and two neighborhood representatives for these groups, and they talked about how they would work together with the police department. And one of the issues that we have is that because of the budget, shenanigans, I'll just say it.
Right, right, okay.
I'm trying to think of a better word, but we'll just go with shenanigans. We moved our mental health support into the fire department.
Right, yeah, that was controversial, yeah.
Well, as it should be. As the representative from that area, from that, from that contract was, was talking, you know, she pointed out that this is a huge learning curve for the fire department. They're not used to that.
And I mean, what was the reasoning behind that? Because it had been in, was it the Health Department? Or what department was it in? And then why did they decide to move it to the fire department?
My understanding, it was in some sort of a public safety realm, and that because of funding, there was some dollars there. And if you listen to the way this current, this current council member talked about budgets, in twenty twenty-one, there was a forum that she attended, and she talked about how the police department had extra money. And I'm sitting here scratching my head, thinking, well, in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-one, the police department did not have extra money. They actually did not have enough officers hired.
Right.
And of course, we were going through the, the, the human rights investigation at that time and looking at all of that. So this idea that somehow the budgets were being mismanaged and that there was a lot of leftover dollars, without understanding the reasoning for that and making sure that we were budgeting appropriately to rebuild those, those agencies, that was not observed. And instead, we had a lot of bad governance.
Right.
A lot of grandstanding instead of real solid leadership on how we want to see our city function.
So it seems like because we have fewer officers, you know, there is extra dollars there, at least it looks like there are on paper, but that's because there's people that aren't hired, right?
That's correct.
And then the other part of that is that then they end up spending a lot of that money on overtime.
Exactly. And what does that lead to? Would you want to work sixteen hours a day under a very stressful job and be told, well, you have to because we need to cover this particular area? I mean, I think that Chief O'Hara has done a great job of explaining that over and over and over and over again.
Yeah.
Now, whether you agree with his policies or not, basic understanding of how humans can work, especially in high-stress jobs, we have to be conscious of that. And we, and if we saw all the number of officers who after the protest had to leave because of PTSD, P S, post-traumatic PTSD, when you look at that, we really had to take a step back and say, are we doing our best to support this incredible needed service for the city? And I think we failed. I think we failed. And I would love to be able to help the, the police department be able to implement all of the changes that are mandated, not only under the DOJ, but under the consent decree, and making sure that not only are those implemented, but we're monitoring them so we can help the chief to say, you know, I'm short-staffed here, I would like to see this. We can't even offer him the opportunity to be innovative with his own force because they're so understaffed.
Right.
And it's just not, and outsourcing, you see the chaos that's going on right now. The other day, all this grandstanding about whether or not contracts were signed and they were supposed to be available April first. You cannot govern like that. That is not the way we can get things done in a cooperative way.
So that's public safety.
There you go. Okay, true.
You know, it's a lot, you know, it's definitely the, the top category for a lot of people. And I think, you know, you kind of expressed how you might distinguish yourself from other candidates. So what, what's two and three on your list?
Affordable housing and then economic development. So for affordable housing, it's really short and sweet. We got to figure out a way to keep local community landlords here, which keep our housing stock not only up to date, but affordable. And we have to make sure that we are enforcing all of the rules and regulations that we have right now. I believe that, again, the city has been short-sta, short-changed on inspectors. Just recently, there was the lead abatement program. They did a presentation to the city council where they highlighted the issues and where they are going to be putting dollars into do lead abatement. And as I was watching that report and, and looking at the pictures that they were showing of buildings that had been damaged by lead, where we are raising children, we are raising children. These are deplorable. And yet, the inspectors, when was the last time our inspectors were able to get in there? What, those bad landlords need to be held accountable.
Yeah, that was one thing that confused me. And that, there's an article I read a few months ago, it was about the lack of inspectors or them not getting paid appropriately.
Yes.
And that confuses me because the current council likes to, you know, promote themselves as looking out for renters, but then they're not budgeting for these inspectors, at least that's what it appeared to be to me.
That is exactly right. That is exactly right. And again, when we, when we load up inspectors and we don't have that, we don't give them the resources, the time to be able to, to manage these huge inspections, we've got, as again, as a city council, we need to step back and say, what are we doing to support these basic services? You know, a lot of those tenants as well are receiving public, public support, public vouchers for their, why is the taxpayer okay that we are not making sure that those buildings are safe? I mean, I just, I think that there is a lot of work that we have to do. And I, I think that we also have to look at, do we have enough housing stock to allow people to stay in Minneapolis? So we have beginner rentals, if you will. All of us had those first college dorm. I don't think anybody wants to live in a college dorm forever.
Although I think they're a lot nicer, some of them, than they were when I went to school.
You know what? I think you're right. I think you're right. Okay, I guess maybe I'll take that one back. But, you know, do we have housing stock for a first time, you know, first-time rental than the move-up, if you will? Everybody, you get that great job, you want to, you know, move up a little bit. And then do we have the opportunity for first-time home, home buyers? And then do we have the opportunity for people to buy homes as their families grow, or they themselves just want something? But more importantly, do we have the opportunity for seniors to find someplace else to live in our beautiful city to stay, to retire in? And I don't know if we have really vetted out all of those options. So seniors are either forced to stay in housing, that maybe they don't want to anymore, but they can't afford to go anyplace else, or they leave.
Yeah.
And leaving a city that they have established their entire adult lives in, that's not really the option we want to have people having to make that choice.
So I imagine Ward Two is predominantly rental?
Yes. Yeah, right, well, right now, yes. I mean, I think that we need to be very conscious of what our stock looks like and really evaluate that. I've yet to see a report that comes back and say, we have so many units of, of this and so many units of that. And of course, the twenty forty plan, which I support, implementation of that, high-density housing, I think is actually a terrific idea for us because it will encourage local businesses, small businesses to start up, little mom and pops. Would love to see that.
Well, that moves into your third economic development. So what is, what do, what does Shelley do on the city council to, you know, promote economic development?
Well, I think what we really have to do, what I would be very delighted to support, is really look at how are we encouraging people to come here? What are we showcasing that Minneapolis has to offer small business?
So do you mean, when you say people to come here, do you mean like people from other states or just from?
Well, it's actually, that's actually two parts. So the other state part is a tourism type of, of activity. Are we sufficiently promoting Minneapolis? Unfortunately, the constant rhetoric from the city council that it's unsafe, that our police are, are, are out of control, all of this perception has created a negative effect of people wanting to come into Minneapolis to even have dinner, to want to enjoy a show. People are riddled with, I can't take the trains anymore. So what are we doing? We have to address that. So that piece is bringing people from other places to come and visit us, stay in our beautiful hotels, take advantage of everything we have to offer, our beautiful gardens, our beautiful parks, walk the University of Minnesota, just walk the campus, enjoy the beautiful features there, the Bell Museum, the Wiseman, all of those beautiful things, yet we are not seeing that turnaround in a tourism type of focus. And then the other part is our local small businesses, like what's going on in my ward. Do we have a local coffee shop? Do we have a, a local printing, a local UPS shop? My goodness, could we please get some more grocery services in, in the ward so that people don't either have to drive or take an Uber or, you know, some, figure out another way to go and get their groceries? So I think that we can do a lot more to encourage that type of development, but right now, the way, the way we are zoned, the way that we do not provide a pathway to be able to help people to, to, to open up those businesses, I think is, is a failure of our, of our current city.
Has any sort of local businesses talked to you about regulations or barriers they might have?
Yeah, I mean, everybody does. And that, you know, unfortunately and fortunately, exactly what I was talking about with lead abatement, right? We're gonna, if we're gonna make sure that places where we're raising children are safe and secure, well, we have to make sure that if somebody walks into a business, it's also safe and secure. So we do have to address that, but are there some things that maybe we can streamline? Or offer a longer time period to repair? Again, I would really need to work with city staff. I don't want to pretend that I have all those answers, but I do know that the local business community and even mom and pop landlords, they're like, if I want to change, for example, I heard you speak to Soren, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting his, his first name, he's running in eight.
Yeah, Soren Stevenson, yeah.
Yes, Soren, yes. So, you know, he, he gave a perfect example that if you have a toilet in an existing building, and I own a home that's a hundred and twenty-nine, it's from nineteen twenty-five, and if you put in, the toilet back then used to be eighteen inches, now I think it's twenty or twenty-four inches, well, if you want to update your bathroom, you've got to update that, that sewage line to that new toilet. Now, this is not pretty, folks, so please bear with me. But, you know, when you start talking about that, that becomes such a burden on a, on a local landlord, it is almost impossible for you to say to make a.
Or a homeowner. And you just convinced me not to remodel my bathroom?
No, oh, no, 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 no. We need local businesses to come. Please remodel, please. But that is something we do have to look at. What is the, you know, where are some of those things that we can make improvements on? And there's got to be, there's got to be a workaround right now because we are literally coming into a dire situation. If we do not rebuild our tax base, it's going to be a huge problem.
It definitely seems that there's, there needs to be more flexibility, right? Like, you know, the bathroom situation in a, in a small business that maybe doesn't have public customers using the bathroom, like the rules around that bathroom maybe can be different than like a restaurant bathroom that has hundreds of people and stuff like that. And it often doesn't seem like there's a flexibility that, you know.
And, and you can understand that. I mean, the, the, those regulations were put in place because at some point, somebody had a major issue with that. But now, as we look at what we wish to, to, the businesses we want to attract and how we can look at different tiers of operation, I think that that's a great idea. Do we have that capacity? I would definitely explore that.
Right, it's a, yeah, tiers. I like that idea. I mean, I just, I know that, like, say, doctor's offices, like if you're, you know, a two-person doctor's office, you end up having to deal with the same regulations that, you know, one with two hundred doctors might have to deal with. And that's, makes it, what it does is it makes it much harder for small businesses survive. And so they end up going to the larger business.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, let me ask you now about the current council and what maybe they've done that you would support and some of those things that you would have done differently.
Well, I do own a piece of rental property, so I have to tell you, I am, I was always very concerned that as a landlord and a property owner, that my rental license did not have a number to contact me if there was an emergency. And where that comes into, into play is that when you have a neighborhood that is full of investor landlords, property owners, oftentimes it's an eight-hundred number, can't get a hold of anybody. There's a problem, you don't know who to talk to about it because neighbors try to solve problems with neighbors, but sometimes you need help and.
I just want to jump back a little bit. So you're, I think, addressing the new renter ordinance that they put in place.
Yes.
That requires that on the lease, there be a number for someone to contact.
And the rental license itself, that when you look that up in the city, that there is a telephone number of a person that will answer the phone. Now, obviously, twenty-four seven might be a problem, but.
So is this one that you agree with or?
I do agree with it. I absolutely agree with it because all too often, especially now in this area where we do not have enough, neighbors are trying to solve problems with neighbors. And I think that's a great tool. However, there does come a point when you have to, you have to involve somebody else. And if you don't, if you don't have access to that information, how do you move forward in trying to resolve? So I do appreciate that, and I was very supportive of that. The other thing that I am very supportive of is that just the other, last week, there was a hearing, there was a presentation about a new city ordinance on civil rights. And I actually agree, and I would have promoted that idea myself. When I was in the state legislature, we had a bill that came forward that said, people with lived experience are best to serve as drug and alcohol.
Counselors.
Counselors, yes, thank you. And during that time, that was very controversial because those offenses were usually felonies. And we had people that had, while they were incarcerated, they were able to earn degrees, they were able to work forward, but they came out and any agency that received any kind of federal grant money or state grant money could not hire individuals that had a felony record. So as a legislator from the suburbs, from the suburbs, I said yes to that. And I took a lot of flak for it. But to me, there are no better people that can help people than people with lived experience.
So I'm not familiar with the civil rights ordinance you're talking about.
So there were three, there were three things. Socially impacted, social justice impacted folks, the Jive Organization, which is interesting because Maurice Ward, who is running that organization. which is interesting because Maurice Ward, who is running that organization, uh, he uh talked about how he is a peer recovery specialist. And I was like, wait a minute, that's my bill. Look at that. And uh knowing that 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 is a focus of this group was was incredible. So fully support that. Uh, the other is height and weight. I think that that is something we also have to look at uh because uh the the testimony that we heard from people, uh, it was very impactful. And I think that we do have to be aware of our biases, um, and that's just not okay. And the third, um, oh, shoot, I'm now, was what? No, I'm sorry. I'm.
It's okay. I I guess I'm I'm still confused. So the, there was a presentation to the city council.
Yes.
Is there like a a new ordinance?
There is, there will be a new ordinance that might even be presented to the community of the whole this afternoon and um and then presented to the city council probably tomorrow.
And so it's sort of adding to federal regulations about what's.
City.
City. But I mean, isn't, um, you know, hiring and discrimination, isn't that covered by federal law?
It is, um, but the actual, the city of Minneapolis does allow for further investigation of a civil rights violation. And that would be an area that we would look at. So if, there are very specific rules about when things can be filed. Um, but once those, um, I believe it's one year from the date of the of when the offense may have may have happened. Um, but then we also are looking at um those those up, those things, if they were to move to to a higher court, would they meet the same standard? That part, you know, we're always a little um concerned about. But here in Minneapolis, it is not okay to do those things.
Okay, so those are a couple of ones that you supported. Were there any actions that the council's taken in the last couple of years that you, you know, would have taken a different path on?
Well, certainly the budget.
Okay, good, good, yeah.
So the budget really for me was the last straw when I just said it, I need to run.
Okay.
I need, we need better governance governance here. And the issue that I was most upset about was the number of amendments that came through that bypassed any kind of supervision of of city staff. When you are directing dollars from the dais to go directly to organizations, you are bypassing all of those governing opportunities. Does the commissioner that is going to be running those programs or supervising those dollars, are they aware? Did they participate in that? Um, for a majority of those, almost all of them, there was not that. We also have an awful lot of programs that are duplicative of Hennepin County.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, those dollars are significant. And we also are are reaching into places where the city has no authority. For example, one of them um is is educating uh early childhood uh workers, I'm teachers. There's already a licensing process for that. There's already a a county process for that, if you want to learn about that. Um, certainly.
I guess I wasn't aware that. So is there a training program the city started for?
Yes, they they put that into the, I think it was five hundred thousand dollars. I'd have to get back to you about the exact amount, but I'm I'm like, this is ridiculous.
I I would love to see, um, and my uh guest I had on earlier, Steve Brandt, uh, we were talking about sort of an independent uh spending committee to review the spending. But I I feel like there needs to be some sort of reconciliation between what's being spent by the state, the county and the city. Because I I I think if you add those three things together, and the Rise Up Center is a good example, where they're getting lots of money from the state, they're getting money from the county, and then the city throws in their money. And it, you know, it just, and the training that's being done there, I I'm not convinced isn't being done also at the county.
Right.
So, uh, yeah, I would love to see that, but it it seems like it's kind of hard to motivate anyone to to get excited about, you know, budgets and spending, so.
And the other, the other problem that we have is that we have so many consultant contracts.
Yeah.
We have city staff that we are not fully utilizing, highly educated individuals who want to do public service work. That's why they're working for the city. It isn't for all the glory, right?
Right.
It is because they want to do public service work. And at this point, there is not an opportunity for them to do that when we are constantly inundating them with consultant contracts. I also have a a a concern that the things that we are focusing on is not transparent to the community. Um, I'm not sure why we need to have three or four different PR type of contracts out there when we have a city staff designed to do that. I mean, right now, because there isn't a single, a single city council member right now who can tell me that they under, that they passed this budget after understanding what the potential cuts from the federal government could come from.
I'm not sure what what you mean by PR, but I did write about uh the commu- what they call community engagement. And there's way more than just two or three. There's like ten.
Yes, yes. Plus, we pay out. Um, just the other day, there was an interview on Care Eleven Plus um with a council member Chavez and and Mayor Fry.
You know, I have not watched that yet, but I heard that I should.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, very interesting.
George Floyd Square.
Yes, yes. And one of the things that that the mayor laid out was that he talked about um how he he engaged Kuna so that it was, it was separated from the city. I think that's an appropriate con- um, consulting contract. And then what came back from the community. And what what we're hearing from um Councilmember Chavez right now is, well, we need to totally revamp all that. It was biased and all and all of this. And I think the basic problem that he's trying to to address is the fact that the community members that he wants to participate didn't participate. We can't force people to participate.
Yeah, I mean, that that's one instance where I felt like the city did a really good job of trying to collect feedback. There was all kinds of meetings. They had meetings for different demographics.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so it, I I don't know what Chavez is talking about there for that. I really don't because um it seemed like there was plenty of time to voice your opinion.
There really was, and I think.
And it's been five years.
It's been five years. Every time somebody gets on a bus and they drive by that area, they are re-traumatized. I mean, again, I keep going back to this because we also have to believe that Minneapolis is a place where we raise families. And the whole idea that we have children every day, seeing that and being re-traumatized. Do you want to talk about disregard? That to me is 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 right in a child's face every day.
Yeah.
It, when when George Floyd's daughter, at his funeral, said, my daddy changed the world. What are we doing? I'm I'm not understanding this. And we have to come together and get this resolved. Stop arguing about uh things that don't matter. Stop arguing about taking away a businessperson's right to say whether or not they want to have uh their their street closed. But let's focus on what we need to do, which is to heal, begin healing, begin. Because until we see all the reforms that the police have to implement, I think this is going to be a two, twofold process all the way through until the community feels whole again. But right now, we have, we have to be focused on that.
So the um, the George Floyd thing is a good example of maybe where the council and the mayor are not aligned. Um, do you uh feel like Fry should be given a third term? And are there um, are there issues where you feel like if he is given a third term, that you would, you have common ground with him and could work with him on?
I do. I think that Mayor Fry has been very challenged. I think any city mayor that was handed what he was handed. Um, he freely admits that he was in the learning curve during a lot of this. Of course, um, during the protests, we had, um, the the state came in, that was a bit bungled.
No playbook for that.
There isn't. There isn't. And I, the frustration that had built up at that point, easily understandable. Uh, and and I'm going to say there was some appropriateness because I think that people just had it. They had had it, they had heard it over and over again. This had been going on for decades. So the fact that that people stepped up and said enough is enough, I think that that was good for our city on some aspect. However, it was our job as, it was the job of the city, I, it's the job of the city council, and the mayor to step back and say, okay, we recognize this, now what are we going to do? And I don't feel like um we have given the mayor an opportunity to do that. He has also had a significant, um, because of the chaos by the city council, and I will lay this at their feet, we have had very talented people leave department heads uh at the city of Minneapolis. All of that experience, all of that history is gone. And as a matter of fact, at the last city council meeting or or two city council meetings, what we learned was that the city clerk was the longest-serving person in that role.
Oh, really?
For the city of Minneapolis, sixteen years he's been there. Other than that, or since twenty sixteen, I'm sorry. Mm-hmm. So, you know, that's sad. Um, and if we can't, everybody, nobody seems to be focused and everybody is just grandstanding. So I think we do need to um be focused on that. I do appreciate that the mayor did put out some vis- a vision of what he'd like to see happen, and a lot of that vision, um, I would agree with. And certainly, whoever is in power, you learn this as a as a legislator, and I worked with Tim Palenti. Okay, and I still got bills passed. So um, I think what that shows is that you have to learn where your common ground is and move forward together. And I would certainly do that with any mayor that's elected, but I would like to see us give Mayor Fry uh another opportunity. He has hired some great staff. Uh, Amanda Harrington just is now in charge of the neighborhood.
I saw that, yeah.
I attended a meeting with her uh two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago now. Um, and she's phenomenal, and I think she's going to do a great job for the city. So I'd like to see Mayor Fry be given that opportunity.
Good. Okay, um, so on a less serious note,
Sure.
um, what uh, what do you like doing in the in the summer? What's something you could um share that kind of gives people a better idea of the of the non-political side of Shelley?
Well, uh, okay, so I do enjoy cooking shows. I have to tell you, I have become a bit of an addict with the cooking shows. Um, Beat Bobby Flay, hands up, my favorite show in the world. Um, but I enjoy doing that. I enjoy trying out new recipes. I just bought an ice cream maker, so I'm learning how to make ice cream. Uh, so that's a lot of fun. I also have a dog. Uh, her name is Tomy. And uh she and I love to go and explore parks and trails. Uh, so we'll just jump in the car and and go someplace. I've been lucky enough that I've been able to see almost all of the parks in Ward Two. Um, some of them are not very.
Do you have a favorite dog park? I have a dog. Her name is Zelda. I'm always looking for a good dog park for her.
Well, there are a couple, but I have to tell you, Tomy is a bit afraid of other dogs.
Yeah, yeah, that happens, yeah.
And you know, um, it's it's it cause, it's a challenge sometimes. So sometimes we watch from afar and uh then we'll go back and and visit uh visit the parks when the other dogs are gone.
Okay.
But you know, that's meeting Tomy where Tomy is at, and I enjoyed people watching too. So um, those are two things that I really, I really do enjoy doing. And of course, we only have three days of summer here, so I pack it in.
Well, I was glad to see that it turned sunny this afternoon. It was pretty cold this morning. It took me by surprise. All right, well, um, this has been terrific. Uh, is there any topic that you wanted to cover that maybe we haven't talked about today or?
No, I think I think I've kind of filled up your time, so. But I do, I do really hope that, you know, at the end of the day of all of this, I hope that if nothing else happens, that uh anybody who is elected to the city council is truly listening to their community. It is not about national politics, it's about community, and all politics is local. And if we are not focused on what our community needs, we are not focusing on the right things.
Well said. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.